This is the planning board meeting of December 15th, 2020. The last, the last meeting of this soon to be over year.
Yeah.
Good written, said some of my Christmas cards. Okay, it is a Zoom meeting and it's virtual. I see that we just have one person from the public here. Oh, here, welcome, Will. Now we have everyone. Welcome, Kitty. You're the only person from the general public, so I won't go through all the details of the Zoom procedure because I know that you know them very well. So we will begin by reviewing the agenda. We have no scheduled hearings, so there's no time schedule here. We do have one item to be added to the agenda, less than 48 hours in advance, and that is regarding a possible tree hearing or the management of a residence request really for removing trees and whether the planning board has a role or wants to take a role in that. So I think, noting that there's nobody relevant to that subject, they're here right now. I'll put it down to the end of the current planning board business list in your agenda. The planning board business is minutes. The letter to the ZBA regarding 41 North Main and 31 Hunting 40B, summarizing our comments. Approval of the planning board's fiscal year 2022 budget. Updates on other development projects such as Coolidge Crossing. Then there we'll discuss a possible tree hearing. And other business, potential articles for 2021, this will come up. We have an article definitely for 2021. Any citizen comments on anything? And we'll have reports on meetings with other boards, and there are several things we can talk about there. Okay, so that's the agenda. Are there any additions? Corrections? Okay, great. We have no minutes this week, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So let's get right to work on finalizing our comments to the ZBA regarding the two Lebowski 40B projects. I did send out a draft of what I had so far from our previous meetings, and I had fleshed out some of the points. So I thought I, we should go over those, and I hope you'll have comments and additions. I probably should pull that up on my screen, so you can jog your memory as to what it was about. So I'll open it up and share my screen. Hold on. Opening the file. Sharing my screen. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
I made a general statement. It's maybe too general to be useful. Did anyone have comments on these?
On the general statement?
Yeah, the general, this is just a like big picture overview.
Yeah.
I wanted to start out as we did before, that we don't support the projects. And that the site control issue is not resolved. But we're not telling the ZBA anything new there, but...
Is it worth on the general statement to say the planning board is not supportive of either project?
Good point.
Well, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree. In fact, I thought about that, and you're absolutely right.
It's just a little stronger.
Yes.
I just, I guess we're not supportive of either project. I'm just thinking back to where we were five, six years ago. If someone had said they'll do 60 apartments on the 41 North Main. I don't know if that would have been the worst. I feel like we're not supportive of 41 North Main, partly because of the utility situation and what it's doing, what it's requiring for the Hunting Lane parcel. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. Just before we make that stronger statement, I just want to, I don't want us to get into a situation where down the road, something, who knows where we'll be. Hopefully, we'll be in a situation where we can dismiss this. We'll be in a safe harbor situation when the next one comes along. But I don't know. I'm just thinking of, you know, we've gotten our town center report and all the studies done over the last number of years saying, well, housing should be in town center, there should be walkability. There are some concessions that they did preserve, the former Paul Tavern, but they also haven't fixed the intersection, so...
Yeah, your point's well taken, Eddie May. I thought about that, too. They have responded to our criticisms to some degree, for sure. The project still isn't viable without infrastructure and the infrastructure itself, but maybe this is too blanket a statement. Because if the infrastructure were there, the 41 North Main project, and if we didn't have another 40B.
Well, I think it's, I look at it a little different sequence, same issues, but a little different sequence. To me, the first sequence is neither project, based on our current understanding, neither project can proceed because of lack of site control, the way it's proposed. Because they're being proposed together with shared resources. So that's it. So we don't support them because they don't have site control. That's it. The way it's being proposed right now. Now, Eddie May's point, I think, is a good one, in that under different circumstances, if they had site control and the proposals or proposal was different, if it was one project or whatever, but if they wanted to do a friendly 40B, then it would look very different. I'm not sure the town would want to do a friendly 40B, but if they did, I think it would look very different. For instance, it might be just speculating. It might be doing something on 41 North Main and not developing Hunting Lane at all or putting in housing that's compatible with the current zoning, the local zoning, using our local, you know, bylaws and laws. So that would be very different. It's not... So I think it's, the sequence to me is, Eddie May's point is very, very correct, but they don't have site control, they're being proposed together, so we don't support other projects.
So...
Yeah, I'll stop.
What if we just, if we insert the word "because" in front of "serious issues remain", and then, what if it said, although the developers have made some positive changes, "because serious issues remain, comma, the planning board is not supportive of either project"?
Yeah, that speaks more to the infrastructure and the lack of site control. Maybe, you know, it's hard to edit things by committee, but these are really good suggestions. I wonder whether this, the planning board is not supportive of either project goes up there after the infrastructure thing. I can move it back, but let me just try this.
I'm just hesitating on putting ourselves in a position of making comments which could be outright dismissed as, oh, you guys wouldn't agree to anything. You know, hopefully, we, you know, will be in a situation where it doesn't come to Housing Appeals Court just saying, you know, well, Sherburne, tough luck.
But, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we have the reasons a little more clear and not just able to be brushed off as being unreasonable.
That's a good point, Eddie May.
Yeah, that is a good point.
By the way, I think that sentence might be because there are serious issues. Because "serious issues remain" sounds like they're, they could be interpreted as they're nearly resolved.
Yeah.
Good point, Eddie May.
Oh, wait a second. Let's see.
Yeah, I flipped the sentence by doing that, I guess.
Right. Because, let's see. This is not a good sentence now.
We could say, although the developers have made some positive changes, or we could say, the developers have made some positive changes, but because there are serious issues, the planning board's not supportive of either project.
That works. I mean, at least to me, that works.
Issues. Okay, then I take this planning board not supportive back, and put it back where it was. Is that correct?
Yes.
Call from Elizabeth Mc...
Okay, okay, great. I think that is better. Thanks. And this, you know, you're going to have a chance to look at it again, so...
Can you go just scroll it down?
Do groundwater impacts?
Nope, nope. If you could just scroll it down, I'm just looking at that sentence, the way it looks again. Not to want to beat the horse that much.
Scroll it back.
Please. But because there are serious unresolved issues?
That is better, yeah.
I mean, that makes it look like there are things that if they resolve them, then maybe we would be supportive of one or both. It's not saying definitely, but it's leaving it a little softer.
I think that is clearer, anyway.
Well, we could, we could separate it, then. We could say, there are serious unresolved issues and the planning board's not supporting, so the planning board's not... Well, I don't know if that makes it any better.
I think we fixed it right here. I think we had enough editing that it looks, this looks good, thanks to everybody's input.
Yeah, well, we can come back to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, in this paragraph, I tried to build in some of our discussion from last time. That is, the big difference between the lip on of Coolidge Crossing and these projects is really the infrastructure.
I thought it was well-written, of course. I have one thought to consider, which is incorporate, where you mentioned the MWRA water from Framingham District wastewater to the Natick sewer system. I thought that might be a place where we could, or maybe after the following sentence, looking at my own notes here, add something that says, "and may provide an asset for the town regarding a nearby groundwater contamination." And I don't know if we're just, it's more detailed than necessary, but it's not a distinguishing thing, instead of...
Oh, I see. And may, say that again, John?
"And may provide an asset for the town regarding nearby groundwater contamination."
Are you referring to general chemicals?
Yes.
Yeah, or we could say general chemical.
And maybe we should be as specific as general chemicals so that we're not, you know, opening the door to, oh, throughout town, anywhere there's...
Sure, sure.
Well, I mean, you could say, due to the state's inability to protect some Sherburne residents from, we have been forced to compromise and accept MWRA water, blah, 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 blah. I mean, you could be as strong as you want. I mean, because that is all true. Those conversations over there have been going on for almost 15 years.
That's right. But the general, I'm a little bit reluctant to introduce the general chemical plume issue here because it's, it's a little bit beside the point. There's no plume at Hunting Lane or 41 North Main.
Yeah, and we don't, yet, we don't want to, it's fears, but it's, as of yet, the houses along there are okay. So let's not say something that it's definitely contaminated and then get everybody concerned.
Right.
Well, you also never want to do anything that may affect property values. You don't want to...
Right. I mean...
Let's leave it the way you've got.
The major point here is that to put up large, dense housing developments is a problem in Sherburne because we don't have water and sewer. So the other, we do have a project that has solved that problem. This project has no way to solve that problem.
Well, I'm not so, yeah, I understand what you're saying. There's some people in mass housing might say wastewater treatment plants are perfectly fine. The well, the well siting and capacity testing is perfectly standardized.
Right.
So they might disregard it. I'm sorry, I thought maybe I could throw in something that would help distinguish one project providing an asset and protecting the town, and the others...
But I don't know. I think it's sort of apples and oranges.
Yeah, yeah. It is. I like, I like...
You know, let's come back to that. Because I don't really see a way to make this paragraph better right now. The point is, yeah, well, I'm not sure this would stand up to mass housing anyway, because, you know, they would be happy to have additional projects. The groundwater impacts is really kind of out of our bailiwick, but it's a, it's a big general problem for the town, so... How many residential units total are those two projects? Could you remind me?
Eighty-seven or eighty-eight, if you count the existing house.
Okay. And I think Board of Health will take care of this big time, anyway. Now, this I'm not sure about, because of the number three overall size. I'm not sure, you know, from a mass housing point of view, that one could argue that the Hunting Lane development is too big for its site. The North Main, definitely. But it's, we need to say something about it still being out of scale for the surrounding, the town center and surrounding neighborhoods. Still too big for the sites. I'm not happy with that. Maybe out of scale. Stop me if I'm screwing up here, but maybe out of scale in the town center and neighborhood in which they're located.
Yeah, I mean, you didn't use the word "character" yet, so usually you have to worry about using that word too many times. So you could say, you know, "out of scale and not in character." I don't know if that's...
Yeah.
Out of character with the neighboring structures.
With neighboring...
So then here, I would say, take out, that's what you're going to do, right? Just say, "out of scale and not with, and not, or out of scale with neighboring structures and not in the character of Sherburne's." You don't want to have character twice.
Yeah, you're right. And not...
In character with the Sherburne Town Center or in the character of, that's probably fine.
And not consistent with the character or something like that.
Yeah, consistent, yeah.
That last, the last two sentences, do you even want that in there?
Yeah, I don't think so.
No.
Because you know, I mean, that could also be viewed as a benefit to the town.
Yes, they would want to view that as a benefit to the town. You're right. So maybe that, it's just enough said right there.
Yep.
All right. So here we're acknowledging the improvements that they've made. I can fix this sentence. It was just that, it was just a note to solve. And I will turn this into good sentences. These are just the points that I came up with, or that you guys came up with. Okay, here are the ongoing concerns. So maybe I could kind of rework that sentence from above. It's still out of character and too big. Oh, and this was supposed to be number three right here.
So can we go back to number two?
The traffic?
Yeah, traffic. So this, trying to, I'm rereading the second sentence. I'm not sure I understand that. I glossed over it before, but there's no plan to use existing intersections, intersection of Route 16 and 27, which has traffic lights and has been redesigned by Sherburne's Complete Streets Plan to accommodate a future 41 North Main development. Really?
Well, it wasn't to accommodate, but the Complete Streets Plan did have that as a four-way intersection.
But I think the purpose of that was to address mostly existing concerns. It wasn't to say that that was there to accommodate a future 41 North Main development.
Yeah.
We might not want to say it that way.
Yeah, it was, there's a driveway there, so it was, yeah, I don't think it was for a development. Or is it driveway there? And it's been redesigned, it's been, it's not like there's a design that's all buttoned up.
That's true. Has been re-envisioned.
Has been identified. They haven't, it's not... When I think of designed, it means...
Right, well, they did kind of lay something out.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Has been identified as what? As needing, needing...
Improvement.
Well, we could, we could still say, in a preliminary, design has been proposed. Just so it's not, it's not just that it was identified and pointed out, but work, some work was done. I agree, John, that it wasn't redesigned, you know, in the formal sense, but there was a preliminary design.
Yeah, that's true. But it wasn't for this project. It was...
Exactly, no.
Yes, that's, that's correct. I think this is better. Does this look okay to you?
Yeah, I always, it's just, it's my job to try to make it difficult for you, Marion, but... Identified, oh, go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, the hard part here is, in reading that, they're gonna say, well, why is it this builder's problem that it's been identified and the town's done nothing about it?
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't really get at why, why we're bringing it up.
I mean, I mean, we should be saying that the way they have the traffic pattern is awful, and there's, they have to do more work, because right now, to have all the traffic come out of Powder House, it's shocking. I mean, anyone that drives up and down the street on a daily basis, like all of us, know that that's just not going to work. But how do you explain that?
Right. Maybe sole use, the Powder House lane does not adequate, address the Powderhouse Lane, North Main intersection, which is completely inadequate for traffic for traffic from a development of this size.
Yeah, I mean, it can't even handle traffic coming out of the Heritage. The first, I would change to properly address, so we're not saying that word twice.
Which is completely inadequate for present for, for current traffic and or which is completely, yeah, indeed this intersection is not adequate for existing traffic.
I, I'm concerned what we're doing here because if I put myself in the position of the state.
They'd say correct it.
Yeah, so fix it. What's that got to do with this project?
I mean, I, I think if you just leave it right there and say, you know, it can't handle more traffic than it's already there.
Right. So I could just take all this stuff off about Route sixteen and twenty-seven?
Well, I don't think so. I think, but I think it needs to be
As needing improvement, let's see.
I don't know, maybe we could, so it has traffic lights. What's that got to do with it?
And could be redesigned as a four-way intersection.
I, I, I think we're starting to try to solve the developer's problem. I'm not sure, so there's, there's no plan to use the existing intersection of Route sixteen and twenty-seven, which has already been identified as needing improvement. There's a preliminary design opposed by the Complete Streets Plan.
You know, may, maybe it is better just to drop that second part because again, you're essentially proposing solutions to the problem you rose.
Yeah, yeah, I, I kind of agree with that, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just take it out. I'll cut it so I can paste it back if we change our minds in the next two minutes.
Well, I was thinking, just say there's no plan to use the existing intersection of Route sixteen and twenty-seven.
Okay, and leave it at that?
Yeah.
Okay. That I could do. Track changes, I'm gonna change the track changes.
You know, the, the second paragraph, I think that'll be just, okay, so we'll get a traffic study done that says it's okay. But at least we're identifying it.
Yeah, is, is that okay now?
Yeah. I kind of think the hunting lane issues bigger deal because there is, there is no easy solution. You know, I kind of think that's maybe you start with that, you lead with that or something, but
Right. Well, they, the thing on Hunting Lane is that they, they could get as far as the railroad tracks. People would have to cross the railroad tracks on the vehicular along with, with cars, but they could have designed walking paths through the the apartment complex or, you know, at least along the tracks or something to allow people from the Hunting Lane project to walk to town center. Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, in the end, the state may say, so put in a sidewalk town.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. So that's forty-one North Main. Are there more things on forty North, forty-one North Main that we should have in here? Well, I'll go ahead and if something occurs to you, we can come back. Hunting Lane. They, they fixed their by right conventional plan, which is kind of not a big deal. And they moved two buildings about twenty feet or so further back from the nearest of butters. But other than that, they didn't make any changes, really.
Not, not to be nitpicking, but technically their by right plan is no longer valid because conventional subdivisions are not by right.
Huh, that's right. That's right, but this, they got this in before or they didn't get their conventional subdivision plan in before the bylaw change.
No, they didn't.
Okay, so should we change that?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't bother, yeah. If they decide to do a subdivision, they know they have to start over.
Yeah.
You know, the Lynn Sweet, who's their kind of representative here, agreed that they hadn't done anything with the thirty-one Hunting Lane project, so this is sort of, of nitpicking. They already know that they have to redo it. And
So I don't know if it's worth mentioning or incorporating this, but there had been discussions, informal discussions about alternatives to this, including doing a friendly project that included the town. And they've had lots of discussions in the past about doing shared septic system with the town and maybe shared water. So we could say something like developer had discussions about doing something in a shared way with the town and we'd rather pursue that discussion.
Where, where would that go, John?
I think it would go in the forty-one North Main side of things. But it also could go back up, you know, in front, you know, just, just before forty-one North Main, but we'd, you know, we could put that in or not, but we did have discussions, you know, for year, for literally a couple, a couple of years, we had discussions, including sort of poorly thought out ideas, including financing and, and things like that. But there, there were discussions that seemed to be grossly underestimating the costs of, of the utilities and stuff like that that were
And grossly underestimating the cost to the town.
Yeah, the operate, the long-term costs, sure, so
The, the, the piping, I mean, what they were actually proposing to to cover in that plan was only about half of what would be needed.
Yeah, the numbers floated around, but that's right, but so it's, I don't know if it's worth it to put it in there, but there, there were, there have been, in the past, there have been discussions about alternative approach to developing both sites. Which involved working with the town, which involved working with the town to consider town center utilities.
Actually, that proposal, did that include the Hunting Lane site?
In discussion at different times, yes.
Okay.
I won't say they were terribly productive or definitive. But in the end, I think the frustration with that was that the cost, the cost and the impact to the town have not been adequately defined. You know, the town is, has and continues to be interested in understanding the potential of, of the ball fields to be used as part of a municipal sewer system. So we're interested in that. We've got long-term interest in having something like that as a way to deal with town center, existing town center properties and the potential for development. So, but it's not, but more work needs to be done before we can decide if it's feasible and if it's financially feasible or desirable.
You know, we're so far from deciding that.
That's right, so I, I don't know if it's worth it to put in a comment saying there, there have been discussions and we look forward to continuing those discussions, but more work needs to be done. And, you know, I mean, in fairness to LeBarsky, he, he wanted to see the town move a lot faster and said if it doesn't move faster, he'll propose a forty B, and here we are. So in fairness to the town, it's not our job to drive a project for one developer. And we've got other things to deal with. And so takes, it takes, the town's not interested in moving faster.
Right, there was, you know, the, the town has a lot of work on their side to do on this, including the ball field assessment and, and judging the willingness of other town center businesses to buy in.
Yeah, the whole thing. I mean, the developer could, could say, yo, I'll pay for the, I'll pay for the, you know, the, a serious next step, the next phase of feasibility and come up and really define what's there, but that's a big financial risk for the developer and so not, you know, not interested. The town would have to do some work to decide if they're interested in something like that, but I, I'd be open to, personally, I'd be open to that kind of thing. I'd be open to more discussion about alternative types of development, including town center utilities, but we get, it's gonna take years.
Right. So how, how would we actually say that here? I mean, this is the ZBA responding to this particular proposal. So I think that's well taken, but I wonder if it belongs in this particular letter to the ZBA. I'm not, I'm just throwing that out. I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I, I don't know either.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I think this is really responding, I mean, that's really a discussion that should be reopened. I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure it should be reopened in this letter to the ZBA.
Yeah, it's not a specific critique of this proposal, except that we'd rather, we'd rather a different, hold different route.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Shock anybody to, when it comes to contested type of forty B. Yeah, okay, never mind. Thanks for letting me talk.
No, it's, it's well taken. It's a discussion that we should reopen because it's sort of got, it's sort of like a lot of loose ends hanging from that earlier discussion that haven't been resolved.
So do, do you think, so now standing back from this, do you think we, are we identifying things that then could be like a traffic study? Oh, traffic study says it's okay, next. Are we, are we identifying sort of Graham's scope things or, and a few specific things that are sort of black and white? I think the scale and impact is, is the big picture kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think there's both big picture things and, and small things. For forty-one North Main, well, we, we don't but we've say that the, the, their traffic, their new traffic pattern is inadequate because you can't just use Hunting Lane the way it is. I mean, you can't just use Powderhouse Lane the way it is. And, yeah, the safety of walking, maybe, maybe we shouldn't say walking on Powderhouse Lane, but safety of walking. Well, from the development, they'll say, well, we have a sidewalk that goes up to North Main and they can just walk down North Main.
Right.
But that's kind of silly because they could walk directly to the town center businesses across Powderhouse Lane, but there's no walkway that they planned. There's only their driveway. So I think they really do need to add something there.
Yep.
Well, maybe
I think it's good.
Okay, maybe this is, this is a start. I'll, I'll clean it up and expand the ones that are sort of just notes and send it out again. Is that okay? I'm not sure what the ZBA deadline is for this, but I don't think it's very soon.
The, the next hearing for this project has been scheduled for January seventh.
Yes.
Would be after our next meeting, but even that, it, there's a pretty good possibility it'll just be continued to the twenty-first.
Right. Because the site control won't be resolved yet.
Well, also, the peer reviewer won't have time to really dig into it and provide comments. They want, the applicant wants the peer reviewers' comments a week in advance, so that really the seventh puts it at New Year's Eve, which is not gonna happen, so so it looks like it may be pushed to the twenty-first.
Right, okay, and also that peer review is only the first stage in the peer review traffic and the stormwater. There's nothing else yet because they don't have the engineering done.
I like the idea of this getting in earlier because things tend to get in at the last moment, so
Yeah, that's true. The more impact it has, I think.
Well, I think so.
Okay, so I, I'll revise it and send it out again.
Do you think that by right item in thirty-one Hunting Lane, do you think that's understood?
No, it's not understood in general. Maybe I should just expand that a little bit. And should I, I should probably include the fact that the by right option now is an open space subdivision, so they're gonna have to do that, right?
Yeah, they, they probably Yeah, they, they probably, they can probably do it the same way they did thi- this one with just a, you know, a sketch irregardless of
Yeah.
Septic capacity.
And actually, it won't be that different because they still have the frontage limited by their six hundred foot cul-de-sac.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll see this again for our next meeting, hopefully in, in better shape.
Uh, Gino, um, the developer contacted you about the, about interest in a MWR TA bus stop, but that's not part of their plan or anything, so I don't think it, it's, we, we don't, it was just an inquiry at this point.
Right.
So I don't think that would be included.
Okay, the next thing in our, uh, agenda is, uh, the approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget, uh, which you all got, I think, this afternoon. And, um, I can pull that up. I have to say, one of them, one of the files, uh, was a little bit difficulty, it, it difficult, it kept crashing my Excel. But, um, I can pull up what I think is the, the basic information that we need.
Yeah, by the way, I had problems also, and then it, Excel did an update or something, and now they both opened fine.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So it looks like I'm able to, I'm able to open it. I just wasn't able to manipulate it at all. Okay, let's see if I can. Uh, basically, Gino, you can just summarize what this budget is.
Right, thi- this one is just the, the personnel, so it shows, uh, myself and Steph in our hourly rate and, um, so that's, this is the salary portion, which includes a two percent raise, which is what the, it, the advisory committee recommended. So it's completely compliant with the guidance provided by the advisory comit- committee.
Okay. Great, and there's no change from last year? So.
Just the two percent, two percent increase. In the expense budget, which is not shown on this sheet, this, this one is just for salaries.
Oh, right.
It was the other one that you had difficulty opening?
No, it was this one.
Oh, it was this one, oh.
Yeah. No, the other one was a simpler, let's see if I can find the other one to open, sorry.
Uh, I have it if you want.
Oh, yeah, maybe you should do it then. I, I'm not finding it.
Let's see, make sure I open the right one. Says it's sharing, but do you see it?
Yes, well, not the, not the file, we see a li- list of.
Is that it?
I think we're seeing your emails. Ooh, that's cool. Look at that.
Well, let me s- start and stop again. I mean, I'm looking at the spreadsheet, so.
Oh.
Zoom is, uh.
Zoom is zooming.
Jeez, I don't know, it looks good to me. Okay, let me try again. Share.
There it is.
There we go.
Right. You know what? Uh, it's. Is it legible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can try a little bit more.
Kind of. That's good, right there.
So thi- this lists the expenses, you know, it shows past, ex, past years' expenses in the different categories. I tweaked the, the expenses slightly, uh, but the bottom line is, is actually, uh, I didn't remember that I had cut it slightly, but it looks like I came out with, uh, fifteen hundred versus fifteen seventy in last year's budget.
Right. Wait, are, is that because you're assuming that, uh, less and less will be done by paper?
In part, yeah, like postage, uh, postage has gone down significantly. Uh, office supplies is mostly ink.
If you can get printer ink, I can't get, I can't buy printer ink lately.
Really?
Yeah, pandemic, everybody, there's a big, you, you can't get HP and Canon printer ink.
Huh.
Wow.
But anyway, um, so again, this is within, th- they asked for a level budget and this is less than a level budget.
Uh, i- is there any expense connected with you moving to new office space, when and if that happens?
N- no, that's, that would be covered by the town administrator budget or DPW budget.
Okay.
Well, likewise.
Computer, do we still need? And you, one time you were having trouble with the computer and.
I got a new computer. It was paid for out of, uh, the IT budget, not out of our budget.
All right, what about any software that, for planning purposes, that maybe would be, is there anything that would, we should? I guess, is there IT stuff that would be unique to Planning Board that we'd wanna?
The, the only thing would, that really would be, um, GIS, which, uh, I have an old version of ArcGIS and I'm in the process of transitioning to what's called QGIS, which is a open source, free software, but, but very capable nevertheless. So, um, so I don't need that. So that, that's pretty much as in, plus, I think, you know, if, if something did come up, other than, you know, like I wouldn't do CAD, which would be a very expensive program anyway, and it's more engineering and architecture related. Uh, any other programs would, could come out of consulting services, two hundred dollars if there was a.
What about, uh, if we did, uh, uh, Survey Monkey type of statewide survey?
Uh, well, you, that's done by subscription, well, there might, oh, the Survey Monkey in particular is done by subscription. I don't remember the monthly cost. I was a little shocked the last time I used it, because it used to be twenty dollars a month, which is very reasonable, and then, then it suddenly it went to something like over a hundred dollars a month or four hundred dollars for a year, which I, so I got a year subscription, but that's expired now. Tha- tha- that wasn't, that was me personally, that wasn't on this budget.
Yeah, we begged and borrowed when we did the master pla- you know, the, the, the survey, the master plan.
No, that was on, uh, um, escaping me. That was on his Survey Monkey.
That's what I mean by beg.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Uh, but there are other, there are other survey services that I'm sure we could use, um, and, and make it work.
Probably should wait and see what we need, when we need it, and.
Yeah.
Pay for what we, what we need when we need it.
Yeah, that would be like a one-time thing. I think if, if we couldn't cover it in our budget, I'm sure we could get, get David to cover it out of the IT budget or something.
Yeah, so, uh, tree manuals, special tree hearing, that's something we're gonna talk about. I was just thinking of the, if there's a hearing costs or something, if it's relative to develop or, or development, then they pay for, they, they, they may pay fees that should.
Right, right. We pay for our own ads, like for the subdivision rules and for any zoning hearings, but we have two fifty set aside for that, and then, uh, one fifty for mailings. So I thi- I think, and by the way, these are not, these categories are not in silos, they can be shifted, uh, you know, no problem. It's not, you can't shift between salaries and expenses, but among expenses, it's, it's, they're, they're basically guidelines. You can spend, you can spend them on, uh, on other things if you need to.
Um, what about?
Other comments on the, on the budget?
Yeah, I have, I have a question under printing and mailing. In, um, two thousand nineteen, why was that still high that year?
We did.
That was for printing, printing the master plan.
Bingo.
We, in fact, we got, we got a transfer in, a reserve fund transfer to cover that.
Okay, so my, my other question is, um, if we have new, um, um, Sherbin rules and regs printed up at some point, would that come out of that line?
Yes.
And how many copies of those do we have currently in the office? I know I asked you this, I just.
Well, we, we need new ones now because we, we, we need to get them print, new ones printed.
Okay, so a- and how much will that cost approximately?
A hundred bucks. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest printing very many of them because people would just get it online. But we, we need to have a few copies, though.
So is that what that one fifty is for two thousand twenty-one, or should we increase that number?
Uh, we could.
Argue that it could be increased, uh, because we could get, uh, you know, for the rules and regs, uh, we've, you know, reformatted the subdivision rules and regs, and now I think before reprinting, we really need to go in and reformat the rest of it and get it straightened out.
Correct.
Uh, and once that's done, I don't know, I, as a planning board member, I find it's really useful to have this book, you know.
I agree.
Flip open.
I think we had a splurge and gets, I think we had a splurge and get staples that are just a little bit longer.
Yes, right, so they hold together.
Yeah. So, again, so, so the question is, for two thousand twenty-one, do we wanna increase that one fifty to an amount that allows these things to be reprinted, or are you thinking kick it out to two thousand twenty-two?
Well, the, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget starts next July, right?
Yes.
Twenty-one.
Right, right, it does start till then. Um, well, if, for one thing, we have seventy dollars more we could add without taking away from any other category, so why don't we do that? We'll still be level funded at fifteen seventy, and we could raise it to two twenty.
Do you know, the, the, along that same line, the, the zoning bylaws are, uh, we, that doesn't come out of our budget.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
So, but, uh, the, the town, if I read that whole document correctly, which I haven't completely read, uh, they're looking for, uh, level budgets pretty much, except for, you know, the
The Senate poll.
Salary increase, so I don't think we can put more, more total money, as long as we can move things around from one bin to another.
Yeah. Well, actually, if, if we can justify it's, I think we can do, you know, if we need to do something, I mean, if, I don't know. If you have to do something, you have to do something, I mean.
You know, you're right, Chris, you're absolutely right, but if we were really ready to, if and when we're ready to get them reprinted, um, which we're not quite yet.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking the question.
Too hard to argue for a reserve fund transfer if we really don't have the money to do it.
All right. I'm cheap, believe me. I, I'm not, I'm just, I know we had talked about doing the reprint, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I'm glad you remembered that. Okay.
I have a question about the budget.
Um, yeah.
Last year, when you guys went through this budgeting cycle, there was discussion about, um, some town center visioning. And I wondered if that was no longer, uh, a relevant, I, I wondered if that fell off the table sort of in, in a conscious way, because there are concrete proposals on the table, or if there should be some re- renewed discussion about town center visioning, um, as an outcome of the master plan.
You know, that, I, I'm glad you brought that up, Steph, because I was thinking of that regarding the budget. You know, what if we wanted to do a, a public, uh, sort of, um, visioning exercise of some sort, and we don't have money for that? But it kind of got set aside because none of us are doing any town center events or town hall events of any kind. So we haven't talked about how we would do it, but it should be a subject for a future discussion, how we're gonna revive that and when. Sort of, I think the, the pandemic had a lot to do with things just falling by the wayside.
You, you, uh, um, MAPC has done those kind of visioning things where they provide the expertise and the capability, you know, in the, in the software, all this. They, they provide the visioning tools as, but you, it's a, have to go win a grant or, uh, get their, but they're not cheap. It's, so you know, I, what did you, I think Milis did that? Or did one or two programs, I think they were sort of thirty to forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and other towns have, they've been very useful, but, um, the chance, sometimes there's a matching part of it or something, but I, when I've looked, when we, in the past, when we looked at all kinds of different tools and stuff, other than Legos and, uh, things like that, um, the, it's not cheap. Sketchup is one that's went from being free to not free to, uh, just, um, well, Legos was pushing my capabilities, but, um, but that's, that, I think Steph's making a really good point. We've really been in handicap by not being able to, uh, do some, some visioning, and I think it would be useful.
I think it would be useful. The question, uh, right now is, uh, would we need money in this budget to do that for fiscal year twenty-two? And, uh, you know, we don't know what, what we're gonna do or when we'll be able to do it. Um, so maybe that's another thing that we, we really can't put in the budget, you know, not being able to justify exactly what we're gonna do and when we're gonna do it.
Right, we don't, I don't have a plan other than saying Legos went up three percent, I think.
Right, right. Gotta increase our Lego budget.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, okay, so, uh, we'll make a note of that and put it aside for now. How is the budget then, uh, looking to everybody?
Looks fine.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I was gonna second what Chris just said.
Okay. It sounds like Chris moved, John seconded, uh, any discussion?
Uh, wait, wait, just to clarify, so we would put, we would put back in the seventy dollars that I was short, added to the printing budget, right? Is that, is that the motion? So that we're level funded?
Yes.
I, yes, I believe so. Yeah, you're right. I forgot about that. Sorry, Gino. So.
Chris, you wanna move again?
I moved to approve the budget with the, um, with the seventy-five dollars put back in the printing.
Or seventy, or whatever it is, to le- to level budget.
To level budget.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the level budget, uh, roll call, John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Addie?
Hi.
Will?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so we have a budget. Thanks, Gino, for putting that together. So next on the agenda, updates on ongoing and potential development projects. We do have a, a bit of an update for, uh, those of you who were not at the zoning board Coolidge Crossing , uh, hearing, which was on December tenth. I'm looking for my notes on that, but I, I should say, uh, uh, some of you who are there also can contribute to this. They actually had read our letter to the zoning board, the developer had read it, and, um, responded or tried to respond to all of our points, I should say, except perhaps the, the bike lane along Coolidge Street, which didn't surprise me too much. I thought their, uh, response was, um, not that bad. I'm looking for our letter now in this pile of stuff. Here we are. Uh, they are going to redesign the bus stop turnout, but they haven't done it yet. We'll see what they come up with. They did check about school buses, and apparently the, uh, school told them that they don't want their buses turning in to the development. Their buses stop on the street and all traffic stops. Little stop sign goes out, and that's how the school prefers to do it. So they're, the developers off the hook for the school buses, but not the MWR TA bus, and they are going to redesign that. Um, they're including benches under a, an, a roof outside of the entrances to accommodate people sitting down or unloading things.
And bike racks.
They have, and bike racks, they said they already were planting bike racks by every building and, uh, a secured bikes parking place. Um, they, they got the message about landscaping or otherwise, you know, architecturally, um, uh, masking the back of that garage near the pool. And what else?
Well, uh, they also talked about, uh, changing the trim a little bit on the back of the parking uh, building that faces the street also, just to further, to augment the, um, landscaping.
Yeah, that's right. And actually, we had asked for either a visually attractive uh, siding or material and our planting. So they're going to do that. I think Ron Stefan brought up the problem that I had actually worried about too, about the, the parking spaces that are very close to Coolidge Street. And, uh, they're just within, you know, it looks like ten or fifteen feet of the street. Uh, they're going to try to move some of those spaces back or remove some of those spaces so that they're not quite as close to the street.
They also pointed out, um, based on also pointed out that they can't put large landscaping or tall landscaping between the parking and the street because it's under the power lines and the, and the ever source has an easement that they, they want to keep their, their power line area clear of large vegetation. Um, and they also have a sightline issue. They talked at length about what trees would have to go or what could be pruned and replanting so that it did not inhibit the sightline, but, um, for the traffic, but, uh, but did provide visual, you know, landscaping buffer.
Right. So, I mean, my overall take was that they, uh, they did try to be responsive to our comments, and they certainly had read them and they made an effort to address each one. Those of you other that were there, uh, do you have any more comments? Gino, Addy?
I didn't, I missed it.
Oh, okay.
So, and I don't think I made it to that one. But so far, at least, it's been positive. You know, this continued to be friendly. What do you be, if you will, and that the, it's nice to have the, the consideration of the feedback.
Yeah, definitely. And also, um, they, they were asked about the update on the water and, uh, and sewage situation with Framingham and Natick. Um, they, they say that the, uh, the talks with Framingham are going well, but it's going to take a few more months to get all the paperwork in order and all done. But they seem to think that, I mean, they sound very confident. And I'm sort of heartened by the fact that, uh, they continue to do peer review and to spend money and, uh, improve their plan. Uh, and which they might not do if they weren't pretty confident that they were going to have water and sewer. Uh, they, they gave the impression that they're very close to an agreement with Natick for the sewer. And, um, I guess that's, that's good. They seem to think that they, that was a, a sure thing.
That's great.
Question too, Gino?
No, that's, that's exactly what, what I would have said, yeah. They, they were very calm. They, they basically characterized the discussions with Natick as all but done.
So that's, that's great news, actually. Okay, and then, Gino, you, you're going to be in charge of getting them the peer reviews that are starting late in January.
The next hearing is January twenty-eighth, so in the, the peer reviewer has been selected. Um, it's Tetra Tech out of Marlboro, and, um, the, the, uh, based on dropped off the check today to pay for that. And it's, um, so the peer reviewer will be able to, we, we should be able to get the contract signed tomorrow, hopefully. And then, uh, they can start work and they'll have their comments ahead of that January twenty-eighth meeting.
Good. So it's moving along. Okay, um, what about other development projects?
Well, um, I had another, uh, inquiry from actually a different engineer about Snow Street. So people are continuing to look at that Snow Street property, uh, for some kind of subdivision.
Okay, I, I have to put that back on my radar screen because I'd like to take a look at, you know, some topo maps and geological maps of that piece. There's a lot of wetland.
And there's a lot of, a lot of slopes as well. He, the, the engineer I talked to was, uh, discussing the slopes issue there in, in light of the, the formula for, in the, uh, open space bylaw.
Okay, but it is potentially, uh, abutting the Rocky Deros reservation.
Yeah, so that would be good.
So it could be a really good conservation, open space subdivision.
Yes.
If that can happen. It has a fair amount of frontage. Uh, I should ask, you know, that little strip of land that goes, strip of the Snow Street property that goes out to Snow Street. Um, it's really, it looks like it's about fifty feet wide. It looks like a, a trail easement or something. Um, that's not wide enough to make a loop road, is it?
I, I don't know. I really haven't looked at it closely.
Well, we, we have to study that, and I'm sure we'll see it again.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other, uh, potential development projects we need to hear about? Mason Hill Road?
Well, that's, that's, the hearing is scheduled for next, uh, next meeting.
Our next meeting, okay. Oh, there was one other thing that came up at, uh, at a Board of Health. It was, it was the COVID nineteen uh, meeting, not the Board of Health meeting, but, um, uh, Darrell, uh, mentioned that, um, this is, this is in regarding wells surrounding these large developments like Coolidge Crossing. And it'll come up again with, uh, forty-one North Main or thirty-one Hunting Lane. Uh, people, uh, at the meeting on Coolidge Crossing were asking about, uh, whether the town was going to be testing wells to look for impacts on wells. And obviously, you know, there's no new water systems being put in, but, yeah, if there is blasting, I guess that's what they're worried about. And Darrell, uh, sent around a, um, announcement from the DEP that they're offering free well testing in towns that have more than sixty percent, uh, uh, well water. And Sherburne is one of the eighty towns that have that. It turns out, I, I read it in, she thought it would be an opportunity for people to just get their well tested and, uh, all over town. But I was just, uh, reading the details this afternoon, and it's really very focused on, um, fluorohydrocarbons. And I'm, I'm not sure they're doing total tests, and they're only selecting forty wells that are potentially contaminated with, uh, fluorohydrocarbons within each town. So it sounds like it's a little bit limited and not what we need for those developments.
And the other question is, what will they do with the information?
Uh, that's right. And the state, um, would, you know, I, I read that this afternoon, Chris, and I don't remember what I read. Okay. I don't know what the state would do with it.
PFAS is, um, PFAS in groundwater is sort of the newest water, drinking water contaminant, a group of chemicals that is of concern. And the state has drafted new drinking water regulations for public water supplies. So I think this is probably, um, a little bit of, um, if I, if I had to speculate, it, it could be like a little bit of a detective work to figure out what is the risk to, to, you know, private wells as opposed to the public supplies that they're planning to regulate? Just to get a, get a grasp on, you know, if they can, are, are there private wells that are at risk and are there other measures needed beyond regulating public water supplies?
You know, Steph, you're exactly right. Um, that's exactly what they say. Um, and, uh, your groundwater protection committee should have a copy of this, actually.
Yeah.
I will send it to you.
We, we've, we've all seen it.
Um.
Oh, you've seen it, okay. But there is some, I was going to cover this on the next agenda items. I can wait.
Oh, okay. When we get down to reports from meetings. Okay, great. Okay, um, here's where we might discuss the possibility of a tree hearing. Uh, discuss whether we need one or not, and, uh, get an update on the tree situation that, um, that, uh, that triggered the, a discussion of the tree hearing. Maybe, uh, Addy May and John, could you bring us up to date on that?
Um, I, I can, um, say that I, that I got an email through the town email system. Um, uh, from a property owner on Maple who is concerned about a couple of trees. They contacted the tree warden and, uh, the our public works director and, um, we're told that it's okay. Thanks for calling it to our attention, but it's not an emergency right now. And, um, they'll, they'll, uh, look at it uh, later, but in the meantime, it's a, it's on a scenic road. So, um, if it's, if you want to take it down yourself, you have to um, get permission. So, um, I left a, I left a, um, voicemail message and during our meeting tonight, just got a call back, so I haven't listened, but, um, so the, I'm in touch with that individual and, uh, we'll explain, I explained the process on the voicemail. It sounds like you want to talk about a little bit more, but, you know, the basic process is, um, we normally hold a, a tree hearing, given the pandemic, we uh, and, uh, we haven't done that, but, um, so, so, uh, and if they, and if it's a hazard that they're, that our, our expert, our tree warden says it hazard, then the tree warden, the town, um, or the homeowner, if, with the tree warden's permission, can take down a hazardous tree without a hearing. So they, that's something, that's not the planning board's responsibility. Um, but, but it does say, it does call them, makes the point that there are, it may, there may be an advantage to holding a tree hearing e- even if it's an abbreviated one for a number of trees. Um, and also use it as an opportunity, and we've talked about this, um, in the past, about holding a tree hearing so that, um, to cover some things like this and, and some others. Um, and also, uh, use it as an educational moment, uh, for the town to talk about where we are with the, with the tree pandemic, you know, with the, the, the tree mortality problem we've been re, really severely affected by. So.
Right. Uh, so, uh, Addy, Addy May, as, as a, uh, as a part of the DPW, maybe you can fill us in a little bit. Um, I mean, my understanding is that uh, the owner was very concerned about this tree. A, a branch, a large branch of it has fallen and damaged his house. Now he's afraid that the whole tree's going to fall down and damage the house. The tree warden looked at it and judged that it was not about to fall down. Um, and that it's not an, an immediate danger, so they can't just take it down without a hearing. Um, and then the, but the owner, uh, sent an email that, uh, was very worried about the tree and were really requesting that the town take it down. So, Addy, can you add anything to that?
I don't have a, a, a hold time, except I guess the tree warden has looked at it and felt it's, from what I understand, um, and, and he's out of the office for the next two weeks because there's a number of guys that are on quarantine be, at, um, the DPW, so, um, that the tree, when it, you know, there was a large branch that was over the house that did fall and was dangerous. And after that, uh, the tree warden and director DPW were looked, were called to look at the tree because this house is different from most other houses throughout our town because it's on a, a small grandfathered lot. And it doesn't, it's the, the house is, I don't know, it's in, within twenty feet of the road edge. So unlike, I mean, there's a lot of trees in town that are hazardous and, um, hazardous in, in that they might fall down. And there's a lot of trees that we've had hearings on that are marked as dead that we haven't been able to take down. But, um, in many other situations, a homeowner, if there was a tree that was close to the house, they'd be able to take it down, but because this house is a unique antique house on where it's located, it, they, they don't have the right to take this tree down unless it approved by the planning board. But I guess my argument, I, I guess the, because it's on a scenic road, because it's not a dead tree, there was a strong feeling that, uh, it, it wasn't going to fall imminently, and it would be better if the decision was made via a, a tree hearing rather than just saying it's an emergency and the town taking it down. Um, and I think having a tree hearing would be a good thing because for the very fact that there are, we are having storms, trees are falling down, people are calling almost every day. There's trees that people are calling and complaining about. Um, trees that are on pieces of property that are technically town forest property or technically conservation property. We have strange slivers of conservation property scattered throughout town, and people say, oh, those are going to fall on the wires. They need to come down. Um, so I guess like John mentioned, having it a hearing so that it has an education opportunity for people who want to know what's happening and what the process is for taking care of these trees in a storm and how we're managing, whether it's going to be, okay, we're going to focus on the main arteries, or we're going to focus on the sides, you know, the, uh, a quadrant of the town first, or how there's going to be some priority because, uh, finances are limited and ever source is only taking down so many trees, and there's still a ton of already marked approved to be taken down trees, and people are curious.
Right. So I, I, I think a tree hearing is a good idea. We usually do it where there's still some leaves on the trees, so it's easier to see which ones actually, which limbs are dead and, um, you know, which ones are totally dead. There's so many trees on Death Row in town. Death Row being the red dot or the blue dot. I'm not sure I know the difference. Maybe you can explain. Um, that, uh, there, there are many trees that are already considered, you know, on the list and agreed. Everybody wants them down. But money and time is the limiting factor, right? And manpower.
Right. Um, yeah, I, I actually don't know what the blue dot is. I know the orange dots, they're, they're goners, but I can't remember what the blue dot is. Gino, do you know?
Well, is one ever source and one town responsibility?
Yeah, ever source was using a blue dot, I think.
Yeah.
But, but I, I think it got a little mixed up at some point.
Okay. So, so my question about, I think, you know, a tree, well, first of all, this particular situation is that the. Tree warden judges that the tree is not an imminent danger. And he's the one who decides that, the planning board can't decide. And Sean uses the tree warden's judgment as his judgment. So as far as this particular. Um, landowner is concerned, I'm not sure how a tree or, how a tree hurt hearing would help.
Well, I don't know if the, I, I don't know if the tree warden is saying it's not dangerous and it's not imminent. I think he's saying. It's not. Maybe, maybe, and I, again, you know, I don't know if there's new information that I guess I haven't been able to talk to him, but my, my sense was he was saying. It. Given all the other trees in town, you know, to you, to rush out and have the town take the tree down. Maybe he's saying it doesn't warrant an emergency action, he wants to have. He wants to, it can go through kind of proper channels, but also the planning board. Hearing the case of the homeowner and the situation of the tree and hearing all the information at a tree hearing, maybe that the planning board. Then decides, yes, the homeowner has permission to use their own resources to take a tree down, whereas right now they can't if they feel it's threatening. Because it's on a scenic road.
So is it? On town property or is it on? Private property?
It, I, I can share a picture if I.
I think it's on town property, it's in the right of way.
In the right of way, but the house is so close.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think it's pretty clear, if a resident has an issue and they want to. Discuss it and have us look at it, schedule a tree hearing, make that part of it. And I mean, if it's, if it's on town land and if it's a threat to somebody's house, the town should be taking care of it. That's my view.
So, you know, according to the tree manual, if it's an imminent threat, it's up to the tree warden to, to judge whether the tree is an imminent threat. And I, we don't have a straight story from the tree warden yet.
That's why we would schedule a hearing, plus I would imagine we can overrule whatever the tree warden says. If somebody comes and pitches to us, this thing is gonna fall on my house and we look at it and say, I wouldn't want this thing over my house. I think we could probably rule and say, yeah, let's take the tree down. And there, there has to be a way for a resident to get around a disagreement in, 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 with the tree warden.
Uh, right, but you know, a- according to the rules, the question then is, uh, who pays for it? If it's an imminent threat, yes, that, and it's on the town land, the town needs to get it down immediately. They don't have to have a hearing.
Correct.
Can have it taken down right away and the town pays for it.
Yep.
Uh, the tree warden has, at least I'm getting this fourth hand now, I don't know, I haven't heard from the tree warden. Myself, but my understanding is that he and Sean decided that it's not an imminent threat to the house.
In, in, in other words, to overrule the, I, I think the whole imminent threat, and Gino, correct me if I'm wrong, is. It, it, it allows him to sort of bypass the hearing if it's. If it's gonna fall right down and land on the house, but if there's enough of an argument to take it down. But it's not an intimate threat, intimate threat, then I would imagine that would be the process of the tree hearing. I mean, there has to be a way if someone disagrees. I would think, right?
Right, if the, if a landowner wishes to apply for scenic road hearing to remove a tree that's. In the town right of way, not on their land and they're, they're willing to pay for the removal. They can apply for this, for the hearing and we have it and, and make a judgment. I think the, one problem with the town having a hearing and then the town taking it down is. The, the many other trees that are in that situation and how do you, how does the town justify paying for taking this one tree down? When there's many, many more that uh, I don't know if they're in worse condition or more of a threat or anything, but. Um, but it puts the town in a difficult situation in terms of favoritism of one, one person versus another. It's certainly not an issue at all for us to have a hearing for them to take it down themselves.
So I think we need a little more information here. Um, you know. There, there may be other trees in town that are in bad shape and that could hit people's houses too. I mean, this one is obvious because it's really close. But um. To Gino's point, we can't just, you know, ha- make sure a tree is taken down because a resident wants it down. It has to be a little better than that.
Oh, I know that, but that's what I'm saying, that's why you would schedule a hearing for them.
Well, there's two kinds of hearings, uh, Chris, we have to distinguish. There's the tree hearing in which we look over a broad view of the town and we prioritize trees to be taken down.
Yep.
And then there's the hearing that a uh, landowner would request to get permission to take down a tree on the scenic road. Those are two different animals.
Yep. No, I'm aware of that.
So. Are we talking about the townwide tree hearing here or the uh, resident requested hearing of a scenic road?
Have they requested it yet? Has that particular?
I'll, I just, as I say, I got a phone call in response to my voicemail, so I'll speak to them tomorrow and find out. So, you know, at this point, I don't, I don't know that. Um, if the la- I don't know if the landowner is willing to pay for it. Uh, if the tree warden declares it hazardous and can take it down and meet without any further ado and pay for it himself, that's one thing. If the tree warden says it's hazardous and the town will take it down, that's another. If, if, if he wants a hearing to take it down because the tree warden says it's not hazardous, then, then um, we can. I, I think the appropriate thing is to have a hearing for more than one tree. And, and uh, try to make a bigger, you know, try to capture a few more of these. Um, I think point Gino made, I think is that we don't wanna. It's, uh, if, if somebody just doesn't like what the tree warden's telling them. The planning board can uh, hold a hearing and give permission with or without the tree wardens. Uh, uh, being in agreement, but I don't wanna, I don't, I think we want to be cautious about just starting to hold individual hearings for. For everybody that wants the town to take a tr- tree down for them.
Yeah, so I, I agree, I think we need a little more information. I think we need to hear directly from the tree warden. Uh, unless Sean, you know, has spoken to him and can relay that directly to us, so we know for sure that he's, what his judgment on the tree is. And then uh.
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm just, I, I think we went, we went from saying, well, let's use this as an opportunity to do a couple trees and talk about. Where things, the status, and here we are in the middle of winter and people are gonna be. Saying what's going on with all these trees and I'm thinking this is an opportunity then to have a hearing where. Our tree warden could be present and our DPW director could be present and people would be alerted that. Kind of the state of trees and what's going on and what's happening with all the dead trees could be discussed and. An opportunity to maybe talk, say, we can't talk about every tree, but there's a couple of situations which maybe it's not imminent, but it's, I mean, at least um. Nobody's saying it's not a dangerous situation and I, and like I'm saying, I'm, I, I, I don't know that the picture will be. Of any interest at this point or not or too, too much, but it just, if you look at. I don't even think this house is on a quarter acre lot, maybe it is. Uh, maybe it's a, it's a strange lot in that it's. The tree is right up next to the house basically and it's. It's not, it's not what most houses in Sherburne are dealing with.
Right, yeah, I did look at your pictures, Addie May, and I could see the tree is pretty close to the house. Um. But I, I'm not arguing against having a tree hearing.
Right.
I'm, I'm just.
I guess so, I'm.
About having a tree hearing for this, you know, for this tree.
Right, I get that, and I guess the only other thing I'm thinking is it's just us saying, well, okay, we don't know, so let's decide if we'll have a tree hearing and we'll make a. We, we won't know until we meet next time in January and then we have to come up with. Okay, yep, we're gonna do something and we're gonna have to put it in paper for two weeks and now we're not looking at, we're not talking about this until February.
That was my concern, exactly what you're saying.
That's right, and the, our normal tree hearing, uh, you know, it takes time to organize because we have to. Uh, we have to publish the list of trees that uh, we're concerned about or proposing to take down. Right, I mean, Gino, maybe you could remind me of the exact procedure of our.
Right, the tree warden prepares that list, well, that's part of the reason we need to know if, if the homeowners are willing or want to. Just get permission for them to take it down versus the town taking it down. Then we could do a single hearing just for that tree and without uh, you know, affecting any other tree. And people thinking of favorable treatment.
Exactly, that's the information we need.
Right.
Uh, the old, the homeowner needs to understand the process and then we need to know if he's willing. If he wants a hearing to get permission to take it down at his expense. So we need to give John a chance to talk to the homeowner who has a call into him. And let's just hear what he has to say.
And, and we could say now, if that's, if the case is that they want to take it down. They need a tree hearing. The, the, John can let me know tomorrow and I can put an ad in the paper and we could possibly do it, have it as soon as January 5th. Hopefully Brian, the tree warden can. Can uh, attend on the 5th, because it's supposed to be a joint hearing.
Right, does that sound like a reasonable way to go forward?
So. Does to me, it, it does to me, I, I was thinking get ten or twenty trees, which means they gotta get labeled. And we are talking about at least the second uh, 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 meeting in January, if not in February, as Addie May was saying. So I, I. I haven't looked at the tree carefully, I just Googled it, so um. But if, if I had my druthers, it would be, let's get ten or twenty trees identified, you know, labeled. Identified with a postcard saying we're gonna hold a tree hearing and all that stuff, and that probably is re- realistically. I mean, Brian's gonna be uh, available. Brian McSweeney's gonna be available and then um, we've got to go through that process, so it probably, it probably is February. I would prefer that, but if, but I'm okay with this other scenario too, and I'll speak to the, the homeowner tomorrow.
Well, they don't, they're, they're not mutually exclusive.
Right, that's right.
If the homeowner a- a- agrees that if he, he wants it down. If the tree warden doesn't agree, he can take it down himself, we can do a hearing as soon as possible. I mean.
Yeah, and, and also keep in mind, the tree warden can say it's hazardous and they don't, we don't need a tree hearing.
Right.
So.
Let's get that decided first and then having a general tree hearing for all the trees that everyone is worried about all over town. Is really something we need to do as well.
I'm so glad you didn't mention the tree manual. Oh.
Right, that uh, we have to go back to public safety and get their latest clean revision.
I think there's, I think that's, yeah, we can, I think we should put it on our agenda.
That's fine with me, yeah. Well, let's put the tree manual on our agenda for the first meeting in January. Uh, and, and meanwhile, can that uh, tree hearing decision be made with, before our next meeting? I mean, you know. All due respect to the homeowner. Uh, who's concerned about his tree, we can certainly inform him of that process. And get that moving.
Can I just clarify for the notes that John's gonna talk to the property owner tomorrow or whenever you can get ahold of him? And if he does want a tree hearing, then Gino can notice, schedule it and notice it for January 5th. But that tree hearing that we're talking about is the type that would, where the landowner would get permission to take down.
Right, let's call it this, let's call it a scenic road tree hearing.
Okay, thank you. Which, which doesn't compel the town to do it, it just allows the property owner to have permission to do it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. But, but the, but the townwide tree hearing then. Would be contingent on a conversation with the tree warden who is currently on quarantine. So that probably wouldn't be until later in January at the earliest, is that my understanding?
Well, if he's on quarantine, he can still do a Zoom meeting, right?
Yeah, but he can't prepare the list of trees. He could, he could do a Zoom meeting for this one tree, but he can't prepare a list of trees while he's in quar- quarantine.
He can't drive around in his car and look at trees by himself?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, you're right, Chris, he could, you know, he could. Okay, so. Uh, is everybody okay with leaving it at that for now? Uh, John, does that make sense?
I think we, if we want to do something, if the, if we, once, if we have a hearing for one tree or two trees. Um. Uh, then I think. I'd, I'd make a motion to say that the planning board approves us going ahead with that scenario if. The tree warden is available and um. That in the, in the homeowner's willing to take the tree down.
You're talking about the scenic road tree hearing.
I'm talking about the potentially January 5th hearing for one or two trees.
Is it, is it one tree or two trees on that lot? I think it's just one.
Um.
There's one. Um.
It's only one that he complained about.
One on their side, right next to the house, but there's another one that's failing, that's right across the street. Again, it's, it's right, you know, you're talking about.
His letter, his letter, he wrote about two trees.
Oh, he did, okay, I'm corrected then, yeah.
Um, so if we're talking about having a hearing for one or two trees at one address. Um, and we want to go as fast as possible in the scenario Gino described, then I think we need to vote tonight to. Uh. Uh, enable that to happen, so that Gino could start posting it tomorrow.
Well, in normal, in that situation, normally the planning board doesn't. Uh, need to authorize that to happen, of, of, normally a person would submit an application and then I would schedule it. Without waiting for the planning board meeting before you off, and then it's another meeting. But um, but i- in this case, maybe because of the. Post the deadline for newspaper ad. Um, we would, you, you would authorize me to go ahead in advance of receiving an application from those, from these people. Because I would almost certainly need to put in the paper tomorrow. And then they could submit an application.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, let's have a motion. Um. Uh, I move that we approve in advance a uh, the, uh, Gino's. That we, we give Gino permission in advance uh, to uh, set up a tree hearing. If this homeowner is willing to take down the tree at his own expense. Uh, and. Do we need to contingent, to make this contingent on the tree warden in, in any way? Or not, uh, Gino?
Um, well, if he's not able to attend on the twenty, on the fifth, then um.
Have to continue the hearing.
We could continue it or if there's, is there a deputy, if there's not a deputy tree warden, one perhaps could be appointed.
I think it's Sean, I think Sean is.
I think you're right, I think it's Sean, yeah.
Okay. So um. Chris?
Um, if he can't attend, couldn't he just write a written comment?
You'd think.
Technically, it, it's things like. Technically, it, it's, things like that have happened before. Uh, I don't think anybody would complain about it. Technically, it's a joint hearing with both, with the tree warden and. But with Zoom, even if he's still in quarantine, he could probably do it.
Sure. Okay, so let's see. Where was I?
So we were about to take a motion.
Yeah, we're making a motion. Does somebody else want to try to formulate this motion?
I have one from John, from a, from a few minutes ago. Says, um, John moved the planning board approve a potential scenic road tree hearing on January 5th for up to two trees.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, we want to say up to two trees. Are we limiting it in case there was, I know there was talk earlier in the meeting of doing, you know, maybe if there was 10 trees or do we just?
Well, that gets into a broader hearing though, Eddie May. I, you know, we have to.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, as, as, I'll, you seconded, okay.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Let's have a, a voice vote. Uh, John?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Eddie?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
I'm an I. Okay, so Gino, you have permission to do that.
Okay.
And, um, John, if you get more information, you know, let Gino know if he has to modify it for some reason.
Yep, okay.
Okay, and, uh, we, we should talk about having a tree hearing. But a regular tree hearing for, you know, an all over town kind of tree hearing. But mainly, I, you know, I, I, I get it. It really should be an educational event more than anything. Because there already are so many trees marked for, for takedown. Uh, it's going to be a long time before they're all done. Okay. Uh, let's see, the 2021 town meeting. I should comment, I have to comment on the timeline for 2021 town meeting that came out to all of us, all of, to the whole town. There, this, this, it's unlikely, in fact, dramatically unlikely that we're not, that we're going to have a regular town meeting in April. Um, we won't be out of the pandemic yet. We could have another town meeting in the DPW garage and do it just like it was done so well, really, in August. Uh, but it would have to be warm weather, so, um, we shouldn't take that timeline that Genie sent out for town meeting too seriously. But, um, I think the, the purpose was just to get some early deadlines in for submission of articles. So Gino sent around the, um, the floodplain district update, uh, article, and I just got it this afternoon. I've only had time to read part of it. And, uh, it looks like it was taken pretty much from the state regulations. Gino, could you explain what the basis for this is?
Yes, the, the, uh, the state, uh, sent around a, um, model, what they call a model bylaw. Because it's not exactly in our format and such. And, um, FEMA is, is requiring that this type of bylaw be in place in order to continue qualification for flood insurance program. I actually, I, the, the draft I sent around, since then, and I, I can put it on the screen if you want, but I, I didn't do attract changes exactly, but I colored in red essentially the new parts and the, and left in black the parts of our bylaw that it's already, already in place. If you wanted to go through that quickly, I can bring it up. Just to explain what's, what's new, what's different, because it's not dramatically different by any means. It's, it's, it's a lot more detailed, but it's not really any new, um, required, new regulations.
Okay, this, is that okay with everybody? Gino shares the screen, shows us the track change version. Yeah, go ahead, Gino.
Okay. So for starters, the purpose section, um, they asked that this list of things be added, which the, we already had this top part. So, you know, it's not, it's not really changing anything here. It's just being more, um, providing more detail about the purpose of the floodplain district. This regulation section, we already had. The floodplain district, they, we didn't have in our, we had this section. We did not have conservation commissioners having a copy of the, of the floodplain maps. So I added that and, uh, just while we're on this section, uh, David Williams forwarded me an email he got from, um, from FEMA that they're, they're initiating the process of updating some of the maps. So these are still the ones that are valid for now, but they, they'll be updated. That's, that's probably going to take a couple of years, so it's not like anything, uh.
Are these the same floodplain maps that are on the, uh, on Mass GIS?
Uh, they should, the, I believe the data on Mass GIS comes from these flood maps.
Okay.
Okay, then again, it, just a little more detail about, um, how to treat, um, the, the district, any development in the district. Subdivisions, they, they call out subdivisions in particular, but they also say, or other developments. You know, should be designed to minimize flood damage. Gee, who would have thought of that? Adequate drainage is provided. Our, our own stormwater, you know, and the state and our own storm, stormwater bylaws are adequate drainage passed around structures on slopes to guide flood, floodwaters around and away from proposed structures. Gee, I never would have thought of that one.
What confused me about this whole thing is that right up at the beginning, it says no structures shall be built on floodplain.
I know.
Then it tells all the reasons you should build structures on floodplains.
Yes. And then again, notify, who didn't, if you get new technical data that might change the floodplain, because you can do that, you can hire an engineer and, and such and challenge the maps. Um, if the town gets that information, we're supposed to notify FEMA and the state. And then permits, we already had this part in, in black and, um, so again, just it states that we require a permit for any type of development in the floodplain. Uh, and we will have a checklist to review, um, the applications to make sure they, all the right permits of our, um, this part.
Is that a special permit with the procedure of our other special permits or is this a special floodplain special permit?
Uh, well, it depends. It's, uh, it's more the building inspector when somebody proposes something, but also, um, well, the next section is variances. So ZBA would do the variances. If you're not going to meet the requirements, there's two types of variances. One is one that ZBA would grant. And, you know, for, for good cause, not result in additional threats to public safety or expense. And it's the minimum necessary to, to afford the, the relief. So that, that's a variance that ZBA would grant. And then the state can grant variances from the state building code. And if, if they do that, then, then this tells you what we, we would do in response to that. And then, um, then there's just kind of boilerplate stuff, the floodplain management takes precedence over any other conflicting bylaws. Just because you follow this and comply doesn't mean you're totally immune from flood, from, from being flooded out. Oh, uh, floodplain in this. I left out building inspector. It's supposed to be added in here. Uh, I'll add that in. And then severability, if one section gets thrown out by a court, then, um, the rest shall remain in effect. And that's it. So it's not, it's more details, but it's not really anything, anything new.
Okay, thank you, Gino. Good work. So, uh, for presenting this at town meeting, maybe, well, when the time, there's plenty of time, but I think, you know, we'll get some kind of simplified presentation materials going and make the job a little easier. Okay, thank you, Gino. Uh, do we need to vote on that floodplain thing? Because I had a few little, um, mainly just edits that I wanted to talk about with you, but I don't want to take up meeting time with it. I can just talk to you about it separately.
Sure, just, um, no, I don't, I don't, I mean, unless there's an objection to submitting this by the deadline that they, that Genie sent out, we can continue to edit it, you know, as we've done, uh, many times.
But we do need to vote on it before we send it to Genie, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one more meeting before that needs to be.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can wait till then.
Okay, great.
At, at some point, we have to have a hearing.
Yeah, but not before it's submitted.
Right.
But we'll have a hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll adjust that based on circumstances, I guess.
Okay, uh, so let's move on to reports on meetings with other boards. Let's see, you already knew that, um, let's see, I, I'm not sure I have my dates correct, but the Holliston, uh, the traffic safety committee in Sherburne, uh, as well as us, uh, were concerned about the Holliston Adessa proposal. And, uh, I don't remember if this was said at the last meeting, but Holliston did vote their proposal down. I think in part because of the input from Sherburne. So that, so that's good news for Western Avenue traffic. And the traffic safety committee, uh, I think we already reported on their last meeting. Is that correct, John? I believe we did.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we're meeting, um, at least I'm meeting, I don't know if you're joining me or not, but I'm meeting with them tomorrow night.
Yeah, tomorrow night, I'll probably be there too. Okay, uh, the groundwater protection committee, uh, Steph, can you put on your citizen hat? And give us an update on groundwater protection committee?
Well, we had our second meeting on, on December 9th last week. Um, there was a new person named Stephen Constantine who expressed interest in getting involved. Originally, he was planning to participate in the town center water options committee. Um, but the way it was stated was that that did not get off the ground. Um, he lives in downtown, um, and, uh, is very interested in groundwater issues. So, um, there was some discussion about including him as an associate member. Um, there was discussion about transferring the well data from people from that to electronic GIS database. Brian Moore, the chair, um, has ideas about exactly how to do this and it's going to submit a proposal to this left board to fund it. Um, the educational materials that Barton Sossen and Melinda, I forgot her last name, are, are developing are looking really good from a sort of messaging standpoint to try and connect to the public, the citizens, um, and educate about groundwater resources. Um, so the messaging is all there and now they're going to start developing materials. There was some discussion about a groundwater protection district, the need for one, um, the reasons it didn't happen in the past. And the PFAS is the last issue. That did not, that was not discussed at the last meeting. The PFAS groundwater testing by the state came up in emails since. And there's a little bit of confusion on my part because it kind of seemed like, um, Brian sent it out and said, oh, we all, we need to go to this left board and try and get on the agenda right away. And then Tom replied and said, well, it seems like if they're only selecting 40 wells in Sherburne, that the Board of Health should weigh in on where those might be located. Um, and so he, Tom had copied Daryl on that. So it's a little unclear to me sort of how that's going to unfold. But the bottom line is that they are going to, the state is going to sponsor testing at up to 40 private wells, which would be really good because PFAS is a, is a compound that our industry doesn't know very much about. Um, other than it's, it's, um, long-term exposure or health impacts, as Carson mentioned. So it'll be, I, I don't, it's not clear to me how, Marion, I know you mentioned that the GPC and the Board of Health might be involved, but it's not clear to me how the roles and responsibilities are going to shake out on that topic.
I, I don't know either. It would be between you and Board of Health.
Oh, totally, yep. So, that's, um.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, I, I should mention that the open space committee, um, uh, met this last week. We've been meeting quarterly to track, uh, update, to track and update, uh, progress on the natural resource and open space and the recreation, uh, areas of the master plan. And, and we've been keeping up with it. Actually, it's, it's quite a, a good committee. Uh, at this last meeting, uh, we floated the idea and actually made plans to try to raise consciousness of the open space and recreation plan by making posts, perhaps on Nextdoor, that kind of call attention to, uh, one or, or one at a time really of the kind of unique aspects of Sherburne geology or open space or natural history or something. Uh, and then, uh, include links to the open space and recreation plan. And so you'll, you'll start to see those on Nextdoor. We'll share those with you because it seems that, that, that could be a way of raising the consciousness on other things too. Including things like, uh, like the trees or other parts of the master plan, town center or whatever. Just to get more people to go in and take a look at those plans and appreciate kind of what the big picture of the town is. But more on that later. That's all I have to report from open space committee. I'm on the COVID-19 team. There's a lot to report there, but, uh, a lot of it is on the town website, so. Are there other, are reports from other town committees and boards?
Um, I guess just, uh, if you're driving around town, you'll notice the roads are striped right now. And that's a, um, new GeoMelt solution that was spread around by DPW crew today. It's made from sugar beet that is supposed to, um, decrease the amount of salt needed in, by pre-treating the road and it can be done in advance, so ahead of the storm. So hopefully we'll be using less salt on our roads and, uh, still be as safe as ever.
So we're switching from salt to sugar. That's, that's interesting.
They're both electrolytes. That's how it works. Okay, anybody else? And, uh, Gino, do you have anything else to report?
I, I can't think of anything else that we haven't already talked about.
And we don't have any public here. Uh, our, our public kitty, uh, seems to have given up and left. So I think that's it. Thank you. So I think that's it, thank you, everybody, and, uh, can we have a motion to adjourn, oh, John?
I have, I, I, Gino sent out the letter from the Attorney General saying that our. The, the Sherburne Planning Board's word articles were, are approved. So it's another opportunity to, to. Pat each other on the back and, uh, say that was a, that was a lot of work and, and, uh. Congratulations, all of you, really well done.
Yeah, here, here, thank you. Good to have that letter, somehow that letter made a difference to me, I don't know, I just felt better having the Attorney General behind us.
Yeah. Uh, the other thing is.
Kind of letter from the Attorney General, right?
Yeah, the other thing is, we saw the email that Abby Fisk sounds like she's stepping down.
Right.
I don't remember giving her permission to do that.
Exactly.
I, I heard that she is moving to Medfield. I don't know that for a fact, but someone mentioned that.
Yeah, I've heard that too.
It's a shame, so, you know, we're open to suggestions as to. People who might be, uh, a good associate member.
Yeah.
Hard to find replacements for good people.
Certainly of that caliber, yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay, any other reports from other boards and committees? Then let us have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
We'll second that.
Okay, everybody in favor, John.
Hi.
Addie.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Will.
Hi.
I'm an I, so thank you, everybody, and we'll ha- have a safe holiday. Don't gather in groups, wear your masks, basically, wait till next year.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Everybody.